Do you like that? Have to do again. Now, okay. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education, and thank you all for joining us. As you notice, the agenda is up on the screen for you to follow along. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.1, and the second, or the first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.1 through 11.2. Please state the agenda item you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.1. There is a sign-up sheet located on the back table of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Here.
Ms. Cotter's absent, Mr. Flotter is absent, Mrs. Davidson?
Here. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. 3.1, to approve the minutes as read of the organizational and regular meeting held on January 14th, 2019. May I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
And a second?
Second. Wasn't here, but I'll second it anyway.
Any questions, comments? Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any district highlights, so 5.1, Enrollment and Capital Update, and Mr. Dorn will be coming up and talk to us this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm going to first begin by telling you a little bit more about our enrollment numbers for this year, and then go into our capital report right after that. Want to make sure that I point out that we're going to refer to some Cropper, the Cropper Forecast several times this evening. The Cropper Forecast was, had a margin of error of plus, plus or minus 2.5 percent. Wanted to make sure that you had that number in your head there. What you can see here are a couple of developments. The pictures in the top row were pictures that were presented previously to you in a enrollment update. The developments in the bottom row, you can see houses are on them, and students are now attending. Students that live in those areas are now attending our schools. But those have not really had any kind of big impact on our enrollment at their particular buildings. Do want to, though, discuss the village at Minerva Park a little bit. We're going to see a little bit later the perceived impact that that development has had on Hawthorne. But also, the Gardner-Vestner development was zoned, I think, November of '18. That's that development that's going to be near Walnut and Lee Road on the east side of the reservoir. About 245 homes, and we anticipate those homes to be, begin selling at the end of this calendar year, and in the middle of 2020, people will be closing and living in those homes. When that development is completed, we expect about 100 new students, and about 50 of those new students would end up at Mark Twain Elementary. Here's a quick table that compares our enrollment by grade level. In the charcoal columns there, it's just, the column on the left is our actual from this year. The column on the right was the forecast from Cropper. So you can see just a comparison between the two, what we thought we might get and what we actually got. If you notice, the boxes highlighted in green, those are our all-time highs for those grade levels. So, and for example, this year, our kindergarten at 1,000 students was our all-time high for You can see there are several of those up there. Our middle school historical high enrollment happened in fiscal year '18 last year. Our elementary and our high school historic high enrollments happened this year, and all three of those are anticipated to keep growing over the next five to seven years. One area that I'd like to really point out to you, if you look across the top row in kindergarten, the second to the last column on the right, the forecast is for 966 students to enroll in kindergarten that year. Wanted to just draw attention that you can see that this year's number is actually significantly higher than that, relatively, I guess relatively higher. But one thing I wanted, want you to note, because this doesn't really draw it out like the worksheets that you have draws it out, if you follow that cohort, that grows to over 1,200 students by the time they get through fifth grade. So, we will continue to expand that way vertically as well as horizontally. Our traditional elementary schools range in student counts from 327 at Point View to 731 at Hawthorne. Now, those are the official October counts, the ones that we use to compare numbers, data from year to year. But something I think that, want to make sure that we take a look at over time as well, we have, if you take a look back 10 years until the forecasted high for elementary school enrollment, will have grown about 400 students. So, over the last 10 years, been about 300. We're going to grow a few more students when we hit that forecasted high in fiscal year '24. One thing that I do want to show you, I've highlighted up there for you, is Hawthorne. We talked about that perceived change from the MI subdivision. I think that a little bit of that is inherent in that number. And also, if you just take a look at Mark Twain there, Mark Twain's building capacity, we'll talk about in a minute, is 575. So we're slightly over capacity, and it's still growing. And the Mark Twain attendance area is the area for the Gardner-Vestner tract. So just wanted to make sure we keep drawing your attention to that multiple times tonight. What I think you'll see from this slide is that last spring, we had a Heritage Relief Project, I guess, with, lack of a better way of saying it. We had several students that were redistricted to Blendon and Genoa. Blendon and Genoa have some slight increases this year. Heritage had a fairly significant decrease. We think that that will continue to grow after the eighth graders who were allowed to stay after they elected to stay matriculate onto high school. So we'll see a little bit better numbers maybe for Heritage next year. Genoa's been on a decline for several years, so the students that moved over there have helped it become a little bit more stable in terms of its size. I'd like to just say that the high school enrollment numbers, though they're up there, they're pretty much in line with our anticipated values, and we don't really have too much concern with them. As we take a look at our capacity, the schools that are highlighted in the brighter green, those are our schools that have fulfilled their capacity to the fullest, more so than the other schools. The lighter yellow, which is really hard to see in this, those are the schools that are the least fulfilled in terms of their capacity. As you can see, the two of the schools that we've already talked about, that we've had some concern with, are Hawthorne and Mark Twain, and they're sitting on the high side What I really wanted to show you in this slide, you had a really small box there, I apologize for that, but it shows you the amount of students that have been overflowed over the last five or six years. So this year, we've overflowed 50 students out of their home school due to a lack of space in a grade level. Sometimes when those students leave their home school, because they're overflowed, family members go with them, so they all attend the same school. What you have up here are the six highest schools in terms of capacity, and what we've done, what I've done here for you is if you just sort of ignore the columns in the middle, the column on the left is their official October count. The column on the right is what I would refer to as their boundary count. If we didn't have open enrollment, we didn't have magnet programs, we didn't overflow, that's, that's their, the number of students that would be in that attendance zone. For Faust, Huber, Alcott, and McVeigh, those numbers are fit relatively still within their capacity, but for Mark Twain and Hawthorne, again, we have the same, same scenario. When we look at capacity at the secondary level, currently, the four middle schools are operating near capacity as shown in the table, with Blendon having the most room for growth. If you take an average of our enrollment this year, we average 877 students per middle school. Obviously, that's just a, I'm just using that as a number, and only to say this, when we hit our forecast high, and in fiscal year '27, that average will grow to 942 students. So we're going to grow an average of 70 students per school over this time period, okay? We have our district breakdown by ethnicity. Just want to, you know, we have, in your, in your spreadsheets, in your workbooks, we have school data, data down to the school level, but this is just the overall district. And you can see, we've had some changes, fairly subtle changes, but some changes this year. Our minority enrollment history, though, this fiscal year '19, this school year, is our historic high for minority enrollment. We've averaged a 1.6 percent increase over the last nine years, and cumulative 12.8 percent in that time period. We've also grown about 1.6 percent over an 18-year, a year, over the last 18 years for economically disadvantaged population, and we measure that through participation in our school lunch program. So that's, that's how we, that's our metric for this. So right now, we're at 35.3 percent. This is data down at the school level. Instead of the district, it's down to the school level. Again, there's more information that you can dive into in that, in that spreadsheet. At our secondary level, we didn't have this, I don't think we had this report last year, so I left some '17 numbers in for people just to take a look back in a couple of these slides, so we have our '17, '18, and '19 numbers here. With a change is representative of '18 to '19, not from '17. So here's our district demographic profile, and I've highlighted a couple cells for you, because I think that sometimes with math, the numbers can, can be deceiving. In particular, if you take a look at our special needs enrollment, in fiscal year '06, so the 2005, 2006 year, our special needs enrollment was about 10 percent of our student population, or 1,400 students. Well, that percentage has grown to 13.3, that 3.3 percent does not sound like a lot, but our base has grown so much. And when you consider the percentage applied to the base, we've grown almost 45 percent more students by student count. So it's, it's really a different way to look at this. The percentage looks subtle, but because our district continues to expand in the base, it's really a different numbers game than you might see. And that's the same with our LAP students, ELL students.
Scott, could I get you to go back to, because I might want to talk a minute about the high school enrollment and capacity? Yeah, that slide. Would you talk a little bit about the, those numbers and the percentages?
Well, capacity at a high school is slightly different than you would consider capacity at an elementary school, because in an elementary school, you're figuring, in both cases, we're counting 25 students per room, but in an elementary school, those students are in that room all day long. That room is, only has a single use. At the high school level, where you have maybe seven academic periods in a day, you can really get greater amount of use out of that particular space. So when you see 105 percent of capacity at Central, that's really not concerning because of the utilization of the space. So we can find ways to easily manage greater numbers of students in that, as compared to that 25 student advisor per classroom.
You also have opportunities for kids to exit for programs outside of the building, or have partial day, so they're, and you never, you never really have 100 percent of your student body in the building all at the same time.
So when I spent my time in a high school, we tried to never plan, well, if we wanted to do a whole school activity, we were really limited to a couple of periods a day because of the number of students that were out for Career Center, or College Credit Plus, or late start, early arrival. So Dr. Kellogg is right in that regard, that, that very few times during the day are you at full capacity at a high school. Any other questions on enrollment before I move on to the capital component?
Are there any numbers here that gives you pause, that make you say, okay, this is something we really need to keep our eye on?
Yes.
Which numbers make you say, hey, guys, I need you to pay attention to this right here, because this one is significant?
Well, what we've discussed previously is that each of those four middle school buildings have had historic highs that are larger than these values that you see here. One of the things that has happened over time, though, is we've had to use more, because of the increase in terms of our specialized populations, our general classrooms become more specialized rooms, and so our capacity's decreased somewhat. But really, more so at the middle school level, my concern would be with the growth, and as I just referenced, you know, the average going from 877 to 945 in the next seven or eight years, where are those students going to go? And right now, Blendon is the building that has the most capacity. It has seats available right now, more so than the other three buildings, and that's likely where, if we made no changes, we'd have to make some subtle changes to get more students to be attending Blendon.
And at the elementary level, the number of larger and larger elementary buildings in our fleet, as those enrollment bubbles at specific buildings give me pause, too. When you look at Hawthorne with 750 kids, that's bigger than most high schools in Ohio. Mark Twain, again, is a concern for me, it's increasing population, and as we see these other housing developments come online, so those give us cause to think about how we're going to make adjustments to make that work a little bit better. And the same problem Scott mentioned at middle school, with the proliferation of specialized classrooms at the elementary level, and space for those as well. I know when I talk with Barb and Gertie, that issue of, we have a new unit, where do we want to put it, becomes problematic. So those would be the areas that I look at. And it's really pointed out, and Scott's made this point before, when you look at Alcott and Faust, and you know those building designs, and look at the capacity, the variance there has to do with room use and number of specialized classrooms at an Alcott. I think it's the same thing holds true, if I'm correct, with Mark Twain and Robert Frost. Again, two twin schools in a lot of ways, with very, very big differences in what we perceive as their capacity, but that, again, has to do with specialized classroom spaces that are carved up for those buildings. And then that puts pressure on those buildings to have specialized units in them as well, which requires a different kind of supervision sometimes.
Thank you.
I actually see it as a Venn diagram of issues that we need to be looking at. So, and as you heard what Scott and John both said, the problem that concerns me most is the confluence of those. As we look at the pressure points in certain schools, as we look at the increases in special populations, we look at the vertical growth, which really worries me a lot, because that goes across all grade levels, basically. If you look at all those things, then you look at how those conflate, and the issues that they create across the district, across all the student population. We have, you know, there are very clear clouds on the horizon, if you can have clear clouds, but it's obvious that there's a storm line on the horizon, and that's what we have been wrestling with for a while. But I view it more, not so much as the individual points that concern me, as how they all come together at once.
Just want to give you a little summary of our, this current year, fiscal year '19's budget as compared to fiscal year's '20 budget for our capital program. The bottom line, the revenue that we're going to, that we have available to us is fairly similar, and you can see the allocations for that money in the, on the upper part of the table. Want to make sure that I draw attention to building and site. That's really the money when we talk about doing something to a school building, that's where this money's coming from. And if you take a look at last year and this year's project list, roofing, HVAC, and site work account for almost 90 percent of that, that money. So there's, there's not a left that falls into the other categories once you get inside there, so I just want to make sure that we talk about that a little bit. Some of the projects that we had slated for the summer, we already have one change, and that's going to be with HVAC work. The HVAC work at Frost and Twain were both recommended to us based on age and condition of the systems by our maintenance staff, with Robert Frost being a little bit further along than Mark Twain. As we looked at those systems and got some feedback from our engineers, the engineers suggested that we needed to broaden our scope of work, so we are going to push Mark Twain off for this year and focus on Robert Frost and increase the scope of work at Robert Frost. So I think that's the only thing up there that's, Mark Twain is not going to happen, we're going to defer it for another year, but we are going to have, have the, have the design work done for us, for both, because they are the same buildings with the same systems, so. Other than that, you can see some of the types of work. Do you have any questions about the types of work that we're going to do at those facilities? Okay. I want to give you a couple updates, though. The electronic message centers, or the electronic signs that are supposed to be going in at North and South, those have been ordered. We actually anticipate the first week of March for them to be installed at both buildings. The masonry work, though, at North, we're going to do that after we get the signs installed, so on or before spring break, we expect to have the North sign completed. The electronic portion will be in, but we're going to add the brick underneath, so it looks similar to what's at South. So, and also, there's a lot of conversation about coffee cafes over the last couple of years. Those are going out for permitting February 1st, so very soon. The work we do expect to be done over the summer at North and Central, so hopefully open for business in the fall. And then the work for South will be part of one of the phases for our renovation. So, very excited, as a coffee drinker, very excited. Want to just take a few seconds to just talk a little bit about what we've been doing from our energy efficiency and cost avoidance. We've spent quite a bit of time over the last year and a half trying to make sure, well, whenever we do a project, we're making sure we have a more efficient system that's put in. But we've gone back, and our HVAC team has taken a look at set points and times for on and off, and those kinds of things, and really what's been super helpful is the Facility Management Express system that we do all of our building scheduling through now. It helps us identify where activities are going to be in a building, so instead of heating a whole building, we can just heat a specific wing for an activity. And, you know, we've had some other ongoing ways that we've been taking a look at, at energy efficiency, but last year, we collected 66,000 in energy rebates through our participation in the Ananok Program, which is now called the NLX Program. And that's great, that's just through, during peak demand periods, actually setting ourselves back, and so that there's not as much of a demand on the grid, and they give us money to turn things off. So we're more than happy to turn things off in our buildings. Did a great job participating in that over the summer. Fiscal year '18, our historic high in cost avoidance at $2.5 million for utility cost avoidance. Very, very excited about that. Typically, we've been reporting that from a calendar year standpoint, based on the timing of everything, but I've, I've got, looking at it from both fiscal and calendar year, just to see how in line with they are. You would think they would be pretty in line with each other, and they are, but this, that I just thought was a really great number to take a look at, so. And also, last year, we paid just over 760,000 for utilities, less than we paid in 2006, 2007 school year. And based on the work that Mr. LaRose had done over all this time period, that's been a staple average for us, about 750,000 a year, less than we've paid in '07. That's $4.5 million of effort, so very excited to be part of that program now. From inception, from the time we took '07 as a benchmark, our total cost avoidance is over $20 million now. And then, I was really excited about it, so I thought I would give you some up-to-date. So if you just take a look at this one right here, you can see that our cost avoidance through September for this fiscal year was, and it's really hard for people to see out there, but it's almost double what it was last year during the same time period, so very excited about it. Don't need to get into it.
Goes down the drain on Wednesday.
Yes, yes. We'll see, we won't maybe have lights on, not sure. So any other, any other questions related to capital or enrollment? Mr. LaRose is in the back of the room, if you would like to acknowledge him for that great cost savings. Good?
That's good.
Yep, any questions?
It's more than good, it's fantastic.
Yes. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate it very much. Okay. 5.2, Summer Learning Opportunities, and Dr. Ebrik, you're going to present?
I just want you to know, Dr. Kellogg, I did not hire the guy who just said that to this point. Never did. Yes. And by the way, cost avoidance, I've been trying to do that with my twins, with the lights in our house, but it's not been working lately, so I wish I could recognize that. So Westerville City Schools, Summer Learning, it's great to talk about something warm as we get to ready to embrace the cold weather here coming upon us here soon. But, Mr. Dorn, okay, definitely you want to leave the clicker here. So I'm going to be brief today, not to say that we're not doing a lot, but a lot of what we're doing is a repeat of what we have been doing over the last several years. We definitely have enhanced our program. You'll recall, several years ago, we enhanced the elementary program, stabilized it, showed tremendous return on investment, and we continue to do that. This past year, we did some tweaks to our middle school program, and at the board's request, and showed another good return on investment, not only with the product for student achievement, but also enrollment. And of course, our high school summer program, we continue to look at ways in which we can get more get more students in our program to not only advance credit, but also recover credit because we know that students that fall behind credit-wise are less likely to graduate. So we try to incentivize through reduced tuition for that. And, but we're also adding, and this is kind of where we're going to do the thrust of today's conversation, is a couple of areas we're going to enhance at the high school programming, giving our kids some enrichment opportunities that they've not had previously. So I'm going to be very eager to share that. And, of course, we always talk about our Almost Kindergarten program. So, we continue to be one-to-one with our Chromebooks, and we use a blended approach, particularly in our high school programming, using digital content to allow students to work at their own pace, so they're in total control of their learning. But we have teacher support. We believe that teachers need to be with students when they're working on digital content. Not all students are self-motivated, but also, students have questions. And rather than having to wait for an email response, teachers are immediately there to provide support. And that's the biggest difference between our program and other programs throughout the state, that we provide direct teacher involvement, and I would never advocate for ever going away from that. Our programming dates and locations are here. What Mr. Dorn just shared about the different upcoming programming improvements in our district in the summer impacts where we go, because we, of course, don't want to interfere with construction. So that's why we change our programming locations each year. The elementary program, we continue to focus on providing intervention to students in grades K through 5. It's an invitation-based program, and we do provide a great deal of remediation, but we do try to enhance skills, and we provide opportunities that students otherwise would not have in the summer with four weeks of direct instruction. And we get the best of the best teachers, and they do a phenomenal job. Middle school, this is where we really did a wonderful job in our program. Greg Manthanix is here with us tonight, our middle school administrator. And we grew our program. We went from, from a 70, well, a low of 32 students to now we're up to 116. And I assume that will be probably around 120, 125, maybe even more. But it's students that truly need that academic intervention. And if you recall, middle school students are in that spot where they can't drive yet, they don't work yet, but, and they can be at home by themselves. And we all have, we, we have middle schoolers, and we know that's not necessarily the best thing. So we provide some direct opportunities for students to engage with others and our teachers. So we continue with our program in which we're going to be partnering with the Westerville Parks and Recreation. This past year, we were intending to do the Pumpkin Glow event, but because of the big projects that they have going on, and if you just go down Cleveland Avenue, there you'll see the big construction project and so many other projects, we were unable, as a Parks Foundation Board, to have that event. But we are planning to do it this fall, and students are going to continue to, this is the ultimately what we're wanting to create here in Westerville and be a destination here in central Ohio for this event. You'll recall our little pumpkins that are made out of styrofoam. This is actually students who carved their pumpkins last year using various, in the shop at Western North High School where we will return. We had an art teacher, as well as an engineering teacher, work with our students and did some wonderful activities. We're going to have some awesome works of art, and it's going to be a tremendous event. I love that one, where you take individual pumpkins and make bones out of them and construct things. So this is what we're going to kind of look like, and we're, of course, have other community partners. So we look forward to that event. The high school summer school, again, that $100, we had decreased our price two years ago in the summer of 2017, and it's at $100. With that, it did increase our costs, but we're saving on the other end because we have more students taking courses in the summer and then can continue on in their coursework and aren't taking up FTE during the school year. So there is a trade-off to that. And, of course, course advancement. Course advancement price of $400 has not gone up over the last few years. We're maintaining that cost for students who want to advance credit. This is exciting for me. We were approached by the theater departments at the three high schools to provide an opportunity for all three high schools to come together, at least to my knowledge, has not been done in Westerville, perhaps before my time. But Nancy's, Mrs., Dr. Nestor Baker says no?
Nancy does, too. Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. I think Joy Rose would probably be the ultimate person for us to ask that question of.
She would, but I guarantee we haven't done it.
Okay, very good. So we're looking for, because what happens is, the theaters at the three high schools, it's like having an all-star athletic team. We have an all-star theater team, and we're going to bring all the departments together and, and have one big wonderful musical production. And so we're really excited about that. It's an enrichment opportunity. Students can get elective credit through a Credit Flex application. So we're going to take that as an opportunity. It's at a minimal cost, $25 per student, and they're going to have a wonderful opportunity. And, of course, $25 will still work with families if, by chance, that we can't make that work for the family. So it's, it's the first ever, and it's going to be an awesome opportunity. Also, what, there is no slides because we're still building this, and that's another enrichment opportunity with SCUBA. There's a SCUBA shop here in Westerville, and we are partnering with them, and they've approached us, and we have helped them design a SCUBA course that they can get PE credit because it's very much aligned to the standards. Their syllabus has already been approved, and it's going to be an opportunity for kids to take SCUBA at the JC Pool here in Westerville, if they'd like to do that. So there is a cost to that as well, but that'll be through a Credit Flex opportunity as well.
Nice.
So, very excited to offer a musical opportunity as well as SCUBA diving. So, we're moving forward with that. Our Almost Kindergarten program, this is for students that have no preschool experience and that are looking to provide that before school starts. This program, pretty much, we do get maxed out every year, so we're asking student people to apply early if they're wanting to do that. And it's a five-day camp, and really, for students that have never been in school, it teaches them from the very beginning how to do kindergarten, and the David Walkers of the world appreciate that.
Scott, can I ask a quick question about that? How do we advertise for that?
Well, we put, we put that in local stores. We put that at parent council events. I'm going to be at the parent council showcase here, I think it's in February or March. Sorry, I don't remember the exact date on that, but for those in the community, look for that date.
I think it's March, but...
And that's going to be coming out where you can go around and look at summer opportunities. So we advertise there. And then also, we send out flyers through our schools, okay? And also, we reach out to churches and things like that.
Mm-hmm. Perfect.
So, you know, we'll continue to focus on identifying eligible students, that marketing hole, that marketing piece you just talked about, President Davidson, as well as recruitment efforts. Our tuition and fees will stay pretty much status quo. We'll work on staffing. We're going to start posting those positions, administrator positions tomorrow. Instructional delivery be ahead of the curve on that. Course offerings, along with those enrichment opportunities, figure out ways in which we can partner with our community. Our instructional time, our programmatic summative evaluation, which we'll give to you in the fall, as well as, of course, always be mindful of being, our budget and being good financial stewards and making sure that we give you a return on your investment.
Fabulous.
So, any questions or clarification?
Good stuff, Scott.
Thank you.
Do we know what the show is yet? Is there going to be a big reveal on the musical?
Yeah, it'll be a big reveal, but we, we're targeting three right now, and we're looking at shows that definitely will draw people in, that people know, and not some obscure show that people have no clue what that is. So when we say it, you will know it and say, "I got to be there."
A quick question. So, the middle schoolers that participated in the STEAM project, it would be really neat next year if we found out if that inspired kids to take that engineering pathway. I don't know if there's something you can plug into the computer to kind of let us know how many kids went on to do that?
I'm 100% sure in the fall I will give you that data.
Yeah. I was actually thinking similarly, but in a little different direction. As these next couple, three years go on, I would like to see how those middle schoolers did overall on credit attainment and how this experience and all the good stuff that we know happened in that summer experience for them, how that was able to sustain over time. So that's what I'm waiting for. I know you will be, too.
We'll get you that data.
It's fabulous.
I love when the board gives me a couple of new things to get. I get to come back and say something different than anything I say every year.
Good. Good. Really good stuff. Thank you so much. Okay. We do not have any public comments this evening. So 7.1, approved financial report and investments for November and December. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Marshall, do you want to talk to us?
Yes, thank you, President Davidson. So we have two months to go over. We only had one board meeting in December plus the holidays, so we're going over November 30th and December 31st, 2018 financial reports today. So for the general fund for November 30th, we had year-to-date receipts of $82.7 million, year-to-date expenditures of $72.2 million, with an unencumbered fund balance of $115.4 million. For all funds, we had $152.8 million in year-to-date receipts and $105.2 million in year-to-date expenditures, with a total unencumbered fund balance of $171.9 million. For December 31st, for the general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of $87.8 million, year-to-date expenditures of $85.4 million, with an unencumbered fund balance of $108 million. And then for all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of $160.8 million, $121.8 million for year-to-date expenditures, and then an unencumbered fund balance of $164.2 million. Are there any questions about that? It's exciting stuff, I know. Riveting.
You call the roll, please.
Yes. Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay. 7.2, resolution to approve the purchases in accordance with the ORC 5705.41 and Board Policy 6320. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. This is what we commonly refer to as a then-and-now purchase order. So it's an invoice that is more than $3,000 that we did not have a purchase order in place for at the time the invoice was issued. This is actually an old invoice. It's from June of 2017 from Strategic Solutions. We contract with them for scanning services in the district, and the district initially contracted with them back in 2017. This was for a specific print scanning job that wasn't included in the district-wide contract. And so I, I know I say this a lot, but there was some confusion about what was included in the district-wide contract. So it is, our staff did sign off on the scanning services, the services were performed, and this is an invoice that we do need to pay. While we didn't budget it for the current year, we do have a budget available to pay it. So I don't need an increase in appropriations. I just need your approval to pay it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. The personnel consent agenda, are you both okay if we bundle everything?
Yes.
Yes.
And so moved.
And Dr. Hopkins is coming to the... I was, yep, it's 8.1 through 8.8. May I have a motion?
I, I said so moved, so you want a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Good opportunity to follow Dr. Ebrecht, right? Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board. Dr. Kellogg, I'd like to present for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights included in the consent agenda are as follows. We have eight resignations from various classified positions. I'd like to point out that this includes the resignation of Becky Nitz, who currently serves as our Transportation Manager. Just looking at your faces, I know that you know Becky well. She is a retiree hire and has been part of Westerville Schools for 14 years, and we certainly wish her the very, very best. And on a related note, as part of our efforts to grow our own leaders internally, we are recommending to Mr. Randy Snyder assume the managerial position, which you will see in the contractual status changes portion of the consent agenda. We also have two retirements to announce this evening as well. The first one being Mr. Harry Cassidy, a custodian at Walnut Springs Middle School. His retirement date is effective May 1st, 2019, and as of that date, he would have completed 30 years of service here in Westerville Schools. So we certainly want to publicly thank him this evening for all of his invaluable service to the district. We also have an administrator, Mrs. Christine Dulittle, the principal at Emerson and Longfellow Elementary Schools. Ms. Dulittle has invested 20 years of her total of 32-year service here in Westerville Schools with the last four years as the principal. And we certainly thank her and wish her the absolute best with her retirement, although we're not going to allow that to be effective until the end of the school year. First 2019 is when that comes into play. We also have two one-time payments, and the employment of 13 individuals in various classified and classified substitute positions. And as always, with the spring sports season coming, we have the employment of individuals in a number of supplemental contract and classified pupil activity programs. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
No questions, but I do want to ask you to please pass along to Becky how, how much I appreciate the work that she has done. Our Transportation Department is amazing, and the work that they do, and the compassion they show, and the helpfulness they offer, I think our Transportation Department is second to none. And Becky is integral, obviously, to that. The sweetening on that is that Randy Snyder will carry on in that same vein. But if you could please convey that, and with Chris, or my deep thanks for her creativity and her willingness to step forward and make those creative ideas assume life.
Certainly pass along, especially this time of year with the transportation office.
Yeah.
Their talents are even magnified with what they're able to provide our students and families. So thank you.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay, up next is old business, and we're going to take these one at a time. Dr. Nestor Baker was unable to be here last time. I just want to make sure she's okay with them. 9.1, final reading for Bylaw 164, Notice of Meetings. And this was just to further clarify language. Any discussion or comments on this?
Yeah, uh, let me see. Pull up my notes here. Sure I have. See if I want this. Nope, this isn't one I had.
I don't think you had any notes.
I don't have anything to say about this one.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Whenever you're ready.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 9.2, final reading bylaw 165.1, regular meetings. And again, this was to further clarify language. Any discussion or comments here?
So do you want, I do have a couple of suggestions on this one. Do you want to move it onto the table and then have, we move and, have me move an amendment, or you just want to talk about it and change it and then vote on it? What do you want to do?
I thought we would, well, I was thinking we would bring it back next time.
Okay, that's cool.
So just take your changes, and then you and Nicole can work together, and then we'll bring it back next time.
Okay. I will tell you, so that everybody knows what I am looking at, as I read through these, these suggestions I have are not earth-shattering at all, just more for clarification purpose. As we, in this particular policy, say, "The time of such meetings shall be fixed at the organizational, organizational meeting." We do fix our meeting times, but sometimes those things get changed, and I would suggest that we add some language to say, "The time of such meetings shall be fixed at the organizational meeting. Necessary changes to the meeting schedule may occur during the course of the year, period. Changes to the meeting schedule will be published at least 24 hours prior to the meeting." In other words, just to make sure that we are actually holding to the policy that we say we adopt. So that's one that I was hoping that you would be interested in. And in Section C, this is just simple, this is just removing a couple of words. "The agenda for each regular meeting shall be mailed or delivered to each board member, et cetera." I think we should remove the word mailed, just leave it at delivered, so that that takes into account all forms of possible delivery. That's all I had on that one.
Does this make sense to me? Vaughn, any thoughts, comments? Okay.
So do you want to maybe make a motion to table it for the next meeting and we can bring it back, or do you want...
Or do you want a motion to amend what's there?
So why don't we make a motion to table this?
Okay, I move we postpone to the next meeting.
Second.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay. 9.3, final reading for bylaw 165.2, special meetings. Wait, we just did that one.
No, we didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going back. This is just to clarify language. Any questions or comments?
As I was looking at this and thinking about clarifying language and making sure that people understand what we do at special meetings, I was wondering in the first line, which reads, "Special meetings which include emergency meetings," whether that should be changed to read, "Special meetings which include emergency meetings and may include work sessions." And then goes on from there. But just to add that additional phrase. That's all I had on that.
I think that's fine, I think it.
Motion to postpone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to table this.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 9.4, final reading for bylaw 165.3, recess and adjournment. This is revised due to Ohio's Public Records Law. Any comments, discussion on this? May I have a motion, then?
So moved.
Second.
And whenever you're ready.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 9.5, final reading for bylaw 166, executive session, and this is revised due to the Sunshine Law. Any comments, discussion on this? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Whenever you're ready.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 9.6, final reading bylaw 168, minutes, revised to add statutory language. Any comments or discussion? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 9.7, final reading bylaw 169.1, public participation at board meetings, revised to reflect current case law. Any comments or discussion?
Yeah, I had a couple thoughts about this one. I want to see what you guys thought about it. In the first paragraph, "The board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker." Okay, that sounds really good until we go down here under procedures. And in the procedures, we talk about things that cannot be done. We talk about prohibiting frivolous, repetitive, harassing, abusive, off-topic, obscene, irrelevant. That suggests to me some disagreement between the two sets. So I was just wondering if we could remove the phrase "content of the speech" from the first line of the suggested change in that first paragraph, just so that there is no confusion between the first paragraph and the actual iteration of the procedures.
Yeah, I like that one.
So that was one. And let me see, under, let me see, where is it? Section E, it says, "All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer." That's really not in line with our practice, because our practice is that when people speak to the board, they speak to the whole board, and the superintendent, and the, they speak to everybody at this table. And I would prefer that we keep it that way. So I was thinking if we could change that to, "All statements shall be directed to the board as a whole." That was all I had to suggest for that.
Is that okay, Von?
Is that our current practice?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we'll table this one, too. Make a motion to table this. May I have a motion to table this?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And 9.8, final reading, policy 6423, use of credit cards. Any discussion or comments? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I did just want to make a comment. There was a question about this policy being very procedure-oriented, and that, yeah. Well, and that is because it's specifically in statute that we have these specific procedural requirements in our policy. And so I thank the state of Ohio for that. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm the one that asked that. I always ask that.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay, new business, more policies. 10.1, first reading bylaw 131, legislative. Who wants to talk to us about this?
These are all mine.
All right, the Nicole Show.
So these are, all the updates are suggestions from NEOLAs based on either statutory updates or clarification of language based on case law or questions that NEOLA has received. So the legislative update, it's simply adding the line to clarify that the board itself is bound to follow the policies that are of the Board of Education. So that's adding that line for that.
And then, any questions or comments on that? So 10.2, bylaw 1412, conflict of interest.
Yeah, this is based on additional provisions for the Ohio Ethics Law that have been added to the bylaw based on recent conflicts publicized in Ohio districts, according to NEOLA. It adds the specific relationships for family members and relationships that could cause a conflict, and mirrors the Ohio Ethics Law.
Okay. And then 10.3, policy 6320, purchasing and bidding.
This update is recommended to alleviate confusions about what must be competitively bid, and what districts should consider when making major purchases outside of mandatory bidding. We've also changed the name from just purchases to purchasing and bidding for clarification. It also allows for, in cases where we're not able to obtain three quotations, to obtain fewer.
Okay. And then 10.4, policy 6325, procurement, federal grants and funds.
These are in response to the issuance of memorandum M1818 by the U.S. Office of Management and Budget, raising the financial thresholds in several categories of procurement.
Okay. 10.5, policy 6605, crowdfunding.
So this is a new policy. This was, this didn't come from, well, the policy template came from NEOLA, but it wasn't recommended from NEOLA. So the district doesn't have a policy that addresses crowdfunding. So crowdfunding is like a GoFundMe page, or a Donors Choose page, where multiple sources are donating for one project or program. So this policy will allow for our staff members to utilize those platforms. We've created some pretty stringent, I think, administrative guidelines to make sure that we have a good process in place for staff members to do that. We do have, in the administrative guidelines, that they will utilize Westerville Education Foundation prior to going to any crowdfunding site for the, like, teacher grant, the teacher grants, or the funded project that they have.
Okay.
One comment about this one. It's short. It says what it needs to say, it doesn't go on and on, and the procedures are in the guidelines. Yes, yes, just what it ought to be.
Recommended action, 11.1, donations. May I have a motion to approve the donations?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on these?
Our thanks, as always.
Greatly appreciate these, yes, thank you very much. Whenever you're ready.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And 11.2, bus driver hiring incentives. And Mr. Dorn is back.
We began the school-
I'm going to wait till you hear them.
We began the school year with five unfilled contract routes using subs. With some ebb and flow, we are down, now have eight unfilled contract routes. Sometimes we lose drivers to other organizations, sometimes they take a different type of full-time job in general, but we're having some difficulty replacing the drivers that we've lost. We have had a couple of situations this year where our Transportation Safety Manager has had to drive routes maybe once every two weeks, just to make sure that we can keep all of our kids on a bus. And our newly hired manager, Randy Snyder, has had to drive buses this year. So this team's doing everything, I think, possible to provide a typical experience for each of our students every day, but the number of open contract routes and lack of additional subs is a significant and serious issue. The team believes we need 10 to 15 additional drivers at this time, eight to fill the contracts, and the remainder is subs. What this table represents is a summary of what other programs or other districts are doing around the area to try and obtain drivers in terms of incentives. The selection represents a subset of those we compete against for new drivers, but certainly not, as you can see, all. We are highlighted the second to last row down there, so you can see where we are, and then look up and down in sort of comparison. What we're going to propose to you tonight is push everything to the column to the right in terms of incentivizing coming to work for Westerville City Schools as a driver. So if we take a look at our current practice, someone that would be coming to us with no CDL, currently, right now, they're paying $196 for those various items, and then the district is paying $1,500 to train them. They have extensive training, because they don't already have a CDL. So part of our issue is that they'll get halfway through the training, and then somebody else will have offered them a job. And so they can leave before they finish. Not a bus job, just a different job. And so that's one of the things that we face. What we're proposing to do is to take away all of the applicant fees and pay for them ourselves. So we would, instead of a cost for a new driver with no CDL, being $1,504, it would go to $1,700 for us. So it's a slight increase per driver. But we'd be paying for all of those things that it takes to get a CDL. For people who are pre-existing CDL holders, our current practice is that they pay their background check fee, and we pay for the rest, including some training. We're just proposing that we also pay for the background check, so another $50 there as well. But a couple of different things that other districts are not doing, that we are proposing to do, is when you hire a new driver who does not currently have a CDL, if they get through the process and they get through the success, their probationary period successfully, we'd like to give them a $100 signing bonus. And we'd also like to give a district employee, a non-administrative district employee, if they referred this person to us, a $100 referral bonus. And that would then take our cost from $1,500 per new hire without a CDL from $1,500 to $1,900. So it would be a $400 increase per new driver that did not have a CDL. Really, our goal would be to hire drivers who already have a CDL. It takes a lot less time to train. We can get them on the road, you know, with students behind them much faster. Initially, it's not as great an expense to us because of the training component to it. But what we'd like to do is, if they, if we are able to hire one, and they successfully reach their probationary period, we'd like to give them a $250 signing bonus, and then a $250 referral bonus for any non-administrative employee who was able to bring this person to our school district. So this would be a proposed change of just $500 based on, after we've already paid the background fee per driver. Now, $500 is a significant amount, but it's $641 less than hiring somebody with no CDL. So it's a cost avoidance sort of number for us. So in summary, what we'd like to do, if you see that top line, a new hire with no CDL, our current practice is, they'll pay $196, we'll pay $1,504, and the cost for the 15 drivers that we believe we need would be just about $22,500. What we would like to do, the proposed practice would be the driver pay no out of upfront pocket costs, the district covers all those costs, and that would be a total of $28,500. And then you can see the similar differences with the CDL folks. I think this might be helpful to look at visually. This graph represents the cost, on the left side would be no drivers, on the right side would be hiring 15 drivers. If you look at that line on the bottom, that's our current practice and what's least likely to happen, that we would be able to find 15 people with a CDL. It would be the least expensive route, but it's also the most unlikely route, based on our historic experiences. What's most likely is the red line, the second from the top line. That's hiring people that have no CDL under our current practice. So the difference between the red line and the blue line on top, that represents our exposure, our financial exposure for hiring 15 drivers with, if they all came to us and none of them had their CDL. So that maximum exposure is just about $6,000. But we also have an opportunity for a tremendous amount of cost avoidance, which would be that green line, if we were able to get 15 CDL holders compared to the red line, which is what we, is most likely to occur. So what we're proposing is that we shift all costs for training and obtaining a CDL to the district, that we provide a $100 signing bonus to any new driver who needs a CDL upon the successful completion of their probationary period, and a corresponding, $250 signing bonus if they already have their CDL. We'd like to provide a $100 referral for a non-CDL hire to a non-administrative employee, and a $250 referral if they have a CDL. And finally, we just want to make sure that we note that this, we're recommending this to be a pilot program for this calendar year. And I don't believe we currently have anybody in the pipeline. So we're wanting to get this through and start advertising. Questions?
No questions, but a couple of comments. One, I really like your little bus wheel graphics on there. Those are good, like those. I think this is a really good idea. I'm really looking forward to its implementation. And I was thinking today, as I drove past the bus compound and looked at those poor, sad signs that have been hanging up there so long, they've faded from blue to lavender, and thinking, if this is approved, let's get some new signs, let's put some of these incentives out there. Because if you think about it, if I'm applying for a job, and you say, "Got a great job for you, all you got to do is pay me a couple hundred dollars, and I'll give you this job." Yeah. We're not doing that anymore. And that is a help for people who are in need of a job and don't have $200 extra cash to put toward the training-
to put toward the training that's necessary. It has a lot to recommend it. If it's successful, one of the things I am particularly looking forward to is reducing some of the stressors on our other employees in transportation. As we have more pressure points as regards to number of drivers, we have less ability to respond to needs on specific routes, whether those are safety needs or just substitute needs or whatever. So, if we can ramp this up, we not only fill our routes, but we smooth things across the entirety of the department.
I do want, I know that those signs, some of them could use some refreshing. We actually have a plan to change that entire fence line with some designer windscreen that makes it look a little bit nicer as you're driving by there, but also might add some of that advertising back to it. But we have a sign on a bus, and we drive that bus around, and we park it in locations. In fact, we parked it, I think it was at the corner of Cleveland and Schrock, and the owner of the shopping center called us and told us to get it out of there, but that same, I mean, it wasn't there for very long, but we got four phone calls. So, outside of putting it on the edge of our district next to our neighbors to entice people from other districts, I think that we're trying to get that around, and we're trying to. But we do need some other promotional materials. And so, once we have this program, if it's approved tonight, I think we'll be going headfirst in.
Okay, now, I've got, this is in my head, and it's completely inappropriate. Driving this bus around with a sign on it, the only thing that comes to mind is the Oscar Meyer Wiener Mobile. Except it says, "Westerville Schools Bus Drivers." Anyway, so I will look for you in the Oscar Meyer vehicle.
They are, as an advertisement, they're looking for a driver for the Oscar Meyer Wiener Mobile for the summer.
Well, maybe we could get their leftover applications for people who might want to be a bus driver then.
My son is graduating in May. I put the application on his desk.
It's a good idea. Yeah, good starter.
Designer screening?
Well, what we have is, we've had, because of the vans...
Yeah.
We are trying to push so many things inside that fenced-in area that we have some equipment that is very unpleasant to look at. And so, it's windscreen for the fence.
Got it.
But when I say designer, I just mean it won't be just like red windscreen on the street.
Okay.
Not really cool design.
I just didn't know. I was like, huh.
More pleasant to look at than the equipment that we are just keeping there.
Okay.
The shortage of drivers, is that something that's unique to us? Or is that, are we seeing that?
I would say national. It's certainly this area. Everybody is looking for drivers right now. So, and you could see what everybody else was doing, and that's very recent data. What we're trying to do is be different than them so that we are the most attractive location.
May I have a motion to approve bus driver hiring incentives?
So moved.
Second.
Yep.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 12.1, public comments. We do not have any. 13.1, board comments. Any comments?
Yes, I do have one. I have something I'd like to ask you all to consider. We ask pretty much everybody in the district to undergo professional development for various reasons. And I think it might be a good idea if we, as the board, also underwent professional development now and again. And I'm going to ask that we take a look at considering a work session or a retreat or whatever language we want to use to look at topics inherently important to the board and the board's culture and the board's functioning. And I would like to see us do this annually, but maybe kind of like bus driver incentives to think about piloting it in 2019, just so that we have our own PD and our own strengthening culture, building on our successes, dealing with what we, as board members, deal with. So, I want you to think about that and see if it's something you'd be interested in doing.
I like it. I vote yes.
Anything else for you?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. I just would like to announce the 2018 Board Liaison Position and Assignments. Policy is our first liaison position, and we are all going to take care of that. Legislation will be Mr. Bell. Finances, Ms. Cotter. Operations and facilities, I will take that. Community engagement and communication, Reverend Velardo. Curriculum and academic achievement, Dr. Nestor Baker. And human resources will be Von. So, that's it. 14.1, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, February 11, 2019, and Monday, February 25, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We are adjourned.